Good evening. I'm calling this meeting to order of the City Council of Greenfield. So, welcome everybody. Welcome all the guests who are here. Everybody's signing in. If you don't know and want to be part of public comment, the sign up sheet is over here. If you're online, you just have to put it in the chat because we don't see it otherwise. We don't see hands. So, thank you, everybody. This meeting is being recorded by the City Council and GCTV-9. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Our reporter, our intrepid reporter, is that the right word?
Recording in progress.
Right. So, our first order of business is a roll call of members. And I don't see any of our members online, so we might actually be able to do some votes. Not roll call. Yeah, so slow down. Slow your roll.
Counselor Goleb?
Here.
Counselor Gordon?
Here.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yeah.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Bullock did alert the office that she would not be attending until possibly later in the meeting. Counselor Gilmore is not here at this time. Counselor Perry?
Here.
Counselor Healy also alerted us that he would be a little bit late to the meeting, but not here at this time. Counselor Brown?
Here.
Vice President Garrett?
Here.
Counselor Minhaus is not here or online yet. Counselor Toronzo?
I'm here.
And President Wandelowski?
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Fantastic. So, our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion to approve the January 15th and February 19th City Council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Let's vote. I think we can do this.
We can do this.
All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passed. Doing really well here. I want to invite up the Superintendent of Schools for her update. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. I had two updates that I sent in and then have some follow-up information from Counselor Goleb's request. So, we did share some documents prior this afternoon to help with some of that. The business manager Cathy should be online, so if you can just look for Andy. He's going to weigh in on a few of those questions as well. We were lucky enough to have the 29th Taste of World Cultures event at Greenfield High School. It's one of the largest community and family events that we host, celebrating all that makes Greenfield diverse and culturally reflective in our staff, students, and families. So, it was a wonderful event. I did want to just publicly thank Madame Hartman, who is our French teacher, and Tara Cludier, who is our Spanish teacher, because there is numerous hours behind the scenes to make something like that happen, and they always do a wonderful job. The school committee voted to approve our 2025-26 school calendar, so that is now posted on our website. I say that for families and communities to know what our schedule is going to be. And there are some additional half-days for our pre-K program next year, so wanted to highlight that as well as our meet and greets. We also have kindergarten registration that is ongoing, and we will be having three nights at each of our elementary schools in April for those folks who have a five-year-old turning five before September 1st. So, just want to remind families, the sooner they can register their kindergarteners, the better for all of us.
Thank you. That's Andy.
Okay, so Andy is online. What was the other name you mentioned that we should look for? Was it just Andy?
Okay.
He's there.
And just as, before we launch into questions, counselors, I just wanted to, I know that there's a lot swirling right now around budgets, and just kind of a reminder that we haven't started our budget process yet. So, I just don't want to get our carts ahead of our horses. We should be asking questions, but we've got the Ways and Means process as well. So, I think if we can limit some of the questions tonight so that it can make it through the process, I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Counselor Goleb, would you just like me to go through your questions? Do they all have your questions? Do you want me to read the question before we answer? You want to lead the discussion? I said, I said, that is a good question. Is that possible? I can hear my voice moving ahead. Okay. Do you have a preference, President Wandelowski?
I think if you have burning things that the superintendent can help with, but otherwise, you know, I also know the mayor's budget isn't out yet, so we're sort of speculating on things that aren't finalized yet. So, we just have to.
Yeah, I think that a lot, I think that, I'm just going to keep going. I think that a lot of this can be answered in writing. I personally don't process numbers auditorially very well, so I appreciate that you sent us information. And I imagine I will have follow-up questions there, so a lot of that can happen in writing. I will just say that in anticipation of the budget votes, I know that my precinct, having knocked on doors there, they care about two things the most. One, they care about their tax bills and how much that they are paying in taxes. And two, they care about schools. And so, I feel a strong responsibility to be as informed as I possibly can be as we go into the budget process. And I didn't, I saw that you had emailed us back. I'll share for the public who's watching that I had four sets of questions. And I also just want to say, I really appreciate the work that you are all doing. You're not tasked with an easy job right now, and I'm grateful to you all for your work. For the public and for fellow counselors who didn't have a chance to see them, I sent four sets of questions. One about administrators, what, how many administrators do we have? How much are they being paid? How does this compare to comparable districts? Another was around concerning accounts that the, or three accounts that the mayor had shared concern about that I wanted more information about, and what those accounts were for, the purposes and the laws behind them, evaluation of transportation expenditures, and then around out-of-district tuition for children with disabilities. And so, yeah, I'm thinking this through because a lot of this, I think, can be answered in writing. And so, I want to give you the opportunity to perhaps just share some initial thoughts, and probably we'll continue the conversation there. Sure. I think some context, because some of what was shared in the PDF is charts that Andy's going to explain a little further. So, I think just having those explanations will be helpful in processing. I'm going to start, though, simply with the administrators. As you know, we are in a distant comparison of DART schools under DESI, so they go by grade band levels, population, various situations that DESI rates us by. So, I tried to pick three schools that were in our DART school districts because Andy's also using some of that DART school comparison with other transportation costs and things like that. The tough part, though, right now is you can't really find comparison numbers on salaries from their school districts. Their budgets are not easily accessible online, so I was not able to find those numbers for you. I also shared our FY '26 proposed budget, which has all of our Munis accounts with all of our salaries for staff, and it is listed by administration, so you'll be able to see that. And I also really do just want to say, it's not comparing apples to apples. And I think for those folks that aren't actually in administration, it's in education, it's difficult to say, okay, this school has seven administrators and this school has 11. You know, some of those that have less administrators also have coaches, or they have instructional leaders, they have department heads, and things like that. So, whenever you're cost comparing, you really have to dig a lot deeper than just a line-by-line comparison, and I just want to remind folks of that. In Greenfields, we don't have coaches, we don't have department heads, we don't have instructional leaders, we don't have curriculum specialists. So, all of that instructional leadership work is done on behalf of the administrators that are also leading the building, dealing with discipline, doing attendance data, and doing all of the work that we have mandated under DESI. I also just want to say that two of the schools in DART are in turnaround, and that also weighs heavily on additional work that administrators are tasked with. So, I compared with Gardner. Gardner has 28 administrators. They are larger than us. They have about 2,500 students. And we have 20 administrators in six schools. They only have four schools in Gardner. Those are the two schools that are in turnaround, and that actually puts a lot more responsibility on administration. So, just thinking through when you're doing some of your own analysis and looking at this, I just want to put in some context there. The other schools that I looked at that are in our DART comparison are Palmer and Holbrook. Palmer has only two schools, and they have 14 administrators. And Holbrook only has two schools, and they also have 14 administrators. So, when you're doing those comparisons, there may be potential other people that do the work of administration in those districts, but it was hard to discern that information online. Next up was the accounts of concern with regards to special ed revolving, transportation revolving, and out-of-district revolving tuition. You will see that Andy did a combined chart and a multi-year balance sheet income, so that you can look at that. And I'm just going to ask Andy to weigh in to explain the mechanism that he used to do that comparison so that counselors have an idea of what they're looking at, okay?
There are two revenue side in the out-of-district sending tuition. I believe that is related, that's on the expense side, because there's a sped tuition revolving account that we have that is for when we receive students into the district. The fact that the mayor is talking about in the questionnaire about out-of-district sending, I believe that's addressed in the question number four. But so, even though it was only two revolving accounts that were asked for, I thought it would be good for the council to see. There are four primary revolving accounts that the school district uses for helping support the budget operations each year. We have the school choice. That's for students that we receive through the inter-district school choice program. The special ed revolving that I believe the mayor is referring to is a circuit breaker. That is a reimbursement program that the Department of Ed has, where we get reimbursed a set percentage amount above a certain threshold that we have to reach. You might have heard that being discussed at the legislative bodies that are lobbying on our behalf regarding this, is that they want to see that fully funded. Normally, right now, it's around 70, between 70 and 75% reimbursement. All districts are on the hook for the, for four times their per-people amount first, and then any expense above that four-time threshold, we only get between 70 and 75%, depending on what the budget is set at, reimbursement for that. The next one is a special education tuition. That is similar to the school choice, but it's, it's when we have special education programs that we run, and if there is space available, surrounding districts may choose to send their kids to our program, and we are entitled to charge for those students to attend our special education programs that we have in district. The transportation revolving account is pretty straightforward. That's for, we, prior to my arrival this time around, it was determined by the former business manager, actually Mr. Nembrecow, and the former superintendent to self-operate our special education transportation with the goal of helping to potentially maintain costs and even be a revenue generator. I could not find admittedly any analysis as to whether or not the goal was it for it to be budget-neutral. Admittedly, right now, it's not, but I can share some data regarding the overall transportation program as it compares to the DART districts later on. So, those are the four primary revolving accounts that we use as helping support the overall operations in addition to all the grants. Again, I know it was only two that was asked for, but I felt contextually the other two would be good to show. So, what the, what the multi-year balance sheet income statement shows, I wanted to give two years, current year, and what it is being planned for next year, and with our projected balances for 63026. And what I think is also very important to see is the actual change in the balance from the beginning of this fiscal year to the projected end of FY '26. So, that's what you have shown here by each column showing our beginning balance, projected revenues to receive in FY '25, our projected uses, and then a projected balance as of 63025, all things going according to plan. And then we did the same in FY '26 with our projected revenues, projected expenses. That was a part of our FY '26 approved budget, and then a 63026 projected balance. And I'd like to share as far as the, and it's actually, this is a nice, just a quick aside. This is a very nice depiction of, I'll say, a testament to the school committee and the administration regarding how it used its ESER funds, because we were able to, the beginning balances as of 7124. One of the things that ESER was looking to do when it was giving the ESER 1, 2, and 3 was to help districts, in a sense, recover from the pandemic and also set itself up for some fiscal stability once those ESER funds went away. I'm going to say that this is a good depiction for what that did for Greenfield, because we are starting with a combined of those four revolving accounts, just under $3.5 million available to us in FY, the beginning of FY '25, to 27% decrease in the available balance as of projected for FY, the end of FY '26. So, that's again showing that we're able to use more, and we are using more, while also at the same time maintaining the best practice of keeping funds available. You never want to use current year receipts for current year expenditures. This still allows us to maintain that goal. And I guess just a clarifying thing. I know one of the concerns that the mayor brings up, has brought up a few times at school committee meetings is regarding the balance that is, and I'm going to focus on the circuit breaker. The practice in Greenfield is.
Excuse me, point of order, President. We've already gone over the 10-minute time period that we've allotted for this. And I didn't know, coming into this, the agenda item for a budget presentation was not on the agenda. So, I just wanted to say, it's really hard, because I've sat at two school committee meetings so far with numbers read at me. And we need, if we're going to really discuss budget and numbers, it needs to be submitted, and the committee can review it. Otherwise, I can't ask any meaningful questions on this. I don't think it's an appropriate place for a budget discussion under updates.
My apologies. I thought I was doing what I was asked to do with the questions that were provided.
If we could, so I appreciate that we've got pretty detailed questions that you all have answered. And if we can take them back to the council so that Ways and Means Committee and folks working on the budget can work through that. If there's any other high-level comments, Superintendent, that would be great, just because I don't want folks to get lost in the numbers.
Sure. Yeah, I think my last comment really is, as Superintendent, that responsibility to really present information that is in the best interest of our students and really thinking about what impacts any reductions will have. I said at our meeting on Monday that being part of the team and determining what is happening in our schools is important to me. And yet, at 4:36 today, I received an email that there is now a new proposal for reconfiguring our schools. And yet again, I was not part of that team decision. So, as much as there is some reluctance to want to actually have conversations with me, it seems that the schools are being left out of some of the decisions that are being made here tonight. So, I would appreciate being part of these conversations when these reconfiguration ideas come up at council as well. Thank you.
I don't think the reconfiguration is on our agenda, but thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, next we have communications from the mayor.
Can I make a point of order on, on just how this agenda shifted over the last 24? It was very unorthodox. I'm sure, as she's walking out, she wasn't happy with it either, nor am I. I feel like this question portion of, we got communications from the superintendent, which was what is on the agenda. I feel like the questions portion of it got kind of hijacked by 10:00 AM this morning. Nobody actually asked any of these questions. There was one email sent, sorry, by one counselor that then it became, as I agree with Counselor Bottomley, it became then a presentation in response to those questions, which I appreciate was within eight hours of when those questions were put on the agenda, which is very unorthodox. We've asked for information, not only from the school department, from other departments, from mayor's previous, from anybody. It, we got, we got a very quick response today, which was shocking. And I would say that would question, when we've asked questions before, and then we're told, well, that's too much information to be able to give in this short period of a time. We got, we got a very quick answer today, because it seemed to be encouraging for one side versus the other, I guess you'd say. I just, I wasn't very cool with this being added to our agenda that late anyway. And like I just said, I feel like our whole, I know this whole open meeting weird thing that's been happening over the last, like, eight to 12 months about having to say what our questions are ahead of time, which I think is total bullshit. But if we're going to do that, and we've established some sort of rules we just talked about at committee chairs about enforcing the five-day rule, that also goes for this kind of stuff right now, I feel like. We shouldn't have questions coming in, in the last 12 hours or 24 hours before a meeting. If we're not going to, if we're going to say that this is good for the goose, it has to be good for the gander. So, I, I just feel like this, this almost seemed like a dog and pony show right now, because we weren't even actually allowed to ask any of the questions on the, off the cuff while we had.
Can I, can I answer? Can I answer?
Sure.
Thank you. You all have the right to ask questions, and I know we've asked people to send them ahead of time for the five-day rule.
Sure.
You're right. We also wanted to make sure that folks weren't caught off guard. So, I made the decision to have it on the agenda so we could see the questions ahead of time. Counselor Goleb, I would have preferred that you had sent the questions on Friday so that we could fit within the five-day rule.
I'd like to answer.
I know they couldn't also come up, but what I'm trying to say is because those who are already there.
Counselor Toronto, you're out of order. Thank you, Counselor Goleb.
So, I'll explain for the public what has happened. There's been a conversation about how counselors can ask questions at city council meetings. And both Counselor Toronzo and myself have maintained that we should be able to ask whatever questions come up so that there can be a thorough conversation, that also conversation about things that are not planned for. We have maintained that. I had a lot of questions and did not want to catch the mayor off guard and didn't want to catch the superintendent off guard. And so, I reached out to Counselor, President Wandelowski, to ask, would you like the questions in writing? I'd be happy to do, to do that. And so, I chose, instead of asking the questions today, just off the cuff, I chose to send them in. I also assumed, and I think the response, the great response from the mayor and also from the superintendent demonstrates that with having a little bit of time in advance, I thought that they might be able to answer the questions more thoroughly. So, President Wandelowski, if you would have preferred that, you could have, you could have said that. And I couldn't have anticipated the questions, and I could have asked them off the cuff. But frankly, I, I wouldn't have done it another way, because I wanted the mayor and the superintendent to have the heads up. Thank you.
I'm going to, from Counselor Bottomley, and then I think I'd like to end this discussion, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, first of all, I apologize if I came off a little rude to the superintendent. My comments are for the mayor and the superintendent, and it comes from six years of, or five years of being on Ways and Means, of getting information the same day. It's really, even though it was fast, you just can't process something that comes in on the same day, and especially when it's budget numbers. And it might be legit that you could ask them, but it just, it's so much more helpful if it can be, the questions can be put out there, and we can get both sides, and we can get all the information and have an all-night meeting if we need it at Ways and Means, so that we can actually really have the same information. And also, I can look at it, because it's just so hard when it comes in. I think I found out at like 4:00, 3:30, something like that. And it's just, it's been so hard for me to process. It's hard for me to process the school committee meetings too, because it's so much information being read to us, even with some of this documentation, which I'm thankful for, for both the superintendent and the mayor for providing at night. I think there'll be tons of time to evaluate it. So, I just wanted to be clear that this wasn't to cut off the superintendent, but the same message goes to the mayor too. It's just hard to get this information the day of.
Thank you. And Counselor Toronzo, it is really important that we all get to ask questions. And I, I feel bad if you had questions for the superintendent that those didn't happen, so, yes.
The, the point of me saying that is because, the reason I'm saying I feel like it got hijacked is because if we only, if we've only, if we've set this rule, which I didn't agree with when this rule was set, I voted against it when this 10-minute rule was set a couple of years ago. If it's going to be essentially predetermined on what the questions are going to be for whether it be the schools, or the mayor, or any other invited department heads, it already going to be predetermined, they're, then just responding to those questions. Any other questions that any of us have are, we're out of time. Like, so we don't get to ask any of those things. And I don't think that that's a, that's an appropriate way to, to go about it, not only for the predetermination, but also for, again, I agree with Counselor Goleb that I have been very vocal on, I don't agree with this. We have to put things, and sorry Cathy, I disagree with you on this wholeheartedly, that I don't believe that that is the spirit of open meeting law, that we have to list our questions in advance of it. I have seen nothing there. We've seen legal opinions that say otherwise, yet we're still doing it, which I will, I will disagree with every month. But to then have that portion of the night be truncated and stopped because there were some pre-written questions ahead of time doesn't allow anybody else on the council to ask any questions. And that's, that's more of what I'm, I'm saying I have a problem with, is the format of how this came about tonight. Not the, not the context, not the content of it, but the format and how. Not the, not the context, not the content of it, but the format and how this, this came about. I don't think that is something that we should continue to do because it stifles, wow, I can't believe I'm the person who's saying this, but it stifles the comment that could be given. Thank you for appreciating my joke. But yeah, it, it, it just seems to be counterproductive.
Can I, so, I think we can amend our rules and procedures, and maybe something for us to discuss at committee chairs first at a future meeting. Counselor Goleb, I'll get you the last word, and then I want to move on. Thank you.
There's actually no need to amend the rules. I think there was a misunderstanding of the rules, and I was on A&amp;O when we passed these rules. And we deliberately distinguished between the time that the mayor, or the superintendent, or whomever was presenting, we distinguished between those. So you will see on your, on your agenda under item five, that the communications, that the presentation is what is to be limited by 10 minutes. Our question period has no such note there, and so our question period is not to be limited. And so I also want to apologize, I didn't mean to set you all up for the, for, I saw you trying to answer the questions, I'm speaking to the superintendent right now, but in good faith, and, and, yeah, so I would say, just so we all know the rules, we are not actually limited by 10 minutes in our question asking, we can ask as many questions as the president deems appropriate.
So I'd like to welcome the mayor and the chief of staff, and thank you for being in our crossfire, and...
That was a lot of fun to watch. I would just like to say something that, having been the recipient of those questions, it changed my entire day. I spent the whole day at home answering the questions, which they're done and they're finished, so I'm happy. I'd always rather know ahead of time, you know, what something was, but there was a lot of them, so it took me the whole day, but I thought, that's better. And I, I agree with what people said, that you have to look at it, but I, if I was the recipient of the information that just I sent, it would take a long time to absorb that. But at any rate, I'm just gonna go ahead with my little remarks that Matthew helps me with every time that I do this, just so, okay? Budget update. Budget's in full swing. I remain focused on submitting a balanced and fiscally responsible budget that sets a strong roadmap for this year and beyond. I've met with department heads, and gone through a first round of cuts, and I'm now reviewing all department budgets again, making some additional adjustments before presenting the final budget, which I'm hoping is all to you right on time, on April 1st or 2nd when that is due. With evolving circumstances federally and drastic increase in health insurance, my message to all city departments has been to present a fiscally conservative budget. And on to the strongest towns. On a happier note, I'm thrilled to share that the city is, was one of the 16 communities nominated for this year's strongest towns, and we just advanced, and we are now in the elite eight. We beat Manchester, New Hampshire, and yes, they have a population of 100,000 people, so you all have till tomorrow to vote. And I think we have a good chance, if you could get yourself and all your friends to vote, we're up against Silverton, Oregon, and they have a population of 10,000. My son told me, he goes, Mom, they have Henry Davenport days in Silverton, Oregon. I said, but we've got a bee fest, and I sent him a picture. So my whole family has voted, and it's on the website, and you can send it to each other if you know how to do that thing, you know, and push your finger and send it to somebody else, you can get it to all your friends, and I think we're gonna be in the final four. DPW, I think I sent Marlo's something, oh, few. See, I'm seeing some nodding heads, so I'd have to read that statement or explain how potholes are fixed. But I want to extend my deepest gratitude to the DPW for their proactive efforts this winter. I know that there is a lot of potholes, I've learned more about potholes. There's times and temperatures at which potholes can be fixed, and we have a plan to fix them, that the temperature has to be right. I can see Counselor Healy is, he's always helping me with some of these things that I don't like to explain, and thank you for always being there in the audience, helping me out. But I can't thank the team enough for their hard work. And now, I will take any questions, and I have an addendum on something that I just saw. The balances and all of those things together, actually, as of today, is a million dollars higher, and you'll see that in the information that I sent. Okay?
So I'm gonna entertain questions for the mayor, and then if you want to do a brief response to Counselor Goleb's questions, so I'd like other counselors get a chance. So Counselor Garrett first.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor, for speaking to us. I was hoping you could speak a little bit more about the strongest town, or Strong Towns as an organization, because I think it's worth kind of members of the public knowing what this group works on, just as a general rule. I think they're a fabulous organization, you know, and so I think anybody knowing about it would be better off knowing about them.
I'm gonna let Erin take that, because I've had my head in the numbers. I just actually looked at the towns I was trying to beat, and I can tell you a lot about them, and I'm gonna let Erin explain this.
Thank you.
I think it's also a bit of a generational thing because it's a podcast, is where most of us, I think, have learned about Strong Towns. Sorry. So Strong Towns is, it started as a series of books, podcasts, kind of a loose network of communities around the country seeking to build communities that are more sustainable, that are more economically viable through changing things, like zoning laws, and rule planning versus urban planning, and how to incorporate all those things into the uniqueness of your community to build stronger communities as a whole, instead of just more, we don't want to be suburbia, suburbia, basically. It's about a community, not a suburban infrastructure. I think that's probably the best rundown of it.
Thank you.
That was great.
Also, Master Totoro.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi.
Regarding all this paperwork that you sent us today, if you wouldn't mind, if there's one thing you could read out loud for everybody to hear, is the email that you sent to the department heads on November 21st, 2024. Could you read that out loud? Because I think that's very telling.
Yes. I have this right in front of me.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna read this out loud. This we sent on November 21st, 2024. As we begin fiscal year 2026 budget process, please be advised that your budget should reflect a level service budget. This request is due to long-term debt costs related to recent construction projects and the fact that the, that the town is at its levy limit. Once a complete budget overview occurs, the mayor's office reserves its discretion to adjust its recommended budget according to town priorities. As always, I look forward to, to a collaborative process and further budget discussions. Munis will be ready for you shortly to upload your budgets. Our accounting department will advise you on, of the date that Munis is ready. Thank you. And there's this second one? Does it say the same thing? Oh, that was a screenshot. Thank God, because that second one was mighty small, and I, I didn't bring my magnifying glass tonight.
Counselor Gordon, and then we'll go to Counselor Goleb.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and Erin for being here. I don't know why it's making that noise. Okay, can everybody hear me? Is this better? Great. Thank you. Thank you for sending all of the information. I know that you all are working extremely hard, day and night, as is the superintendent and the department heads and everyone, to get ready for this budget season. And this is a more general question. I'm wondering if you can just tell us a bit about the process by which you and the superintendent are communicating about these proposals and budgetary issues, because it, it sounds from both sides like it hasn't been as, as strong communication as everyone would wish. And I know, you know, as was said many times at the special school committee meeting on Monday night by you and others, we all want what is best for our students. I know that that's absolutely your priority, and it's everyone's priority in it. And so I'm curious how we can have that communication go better so that, you know, we get the, the best proposal possible for everybody.
I would say, we actually, we meet every two weeks. I don't know if you knew that. Erin and I, and we, we take turns. We meet with, Erin and I and Stephen and Karen meet every two weeks, and we take turns. They come to our place, or we go to their place. And so we talk about different things. I've been talking about how the insurance, I mean, I've been talking about that since the beginning. And I think we had a really good, I mean, I think I did a good explanation for us at the, you know, that first, that school committee that we had. I think everybody has to know, it's one, it's one big budget. And I did that last year for all department heads. I actually made a, I didn't know how to make those, what do you call them, Erin, the, you know, when I brought the poster board and everybody thought I should be doing a whiteboard or whatever it is they do on the computer, what do they call that? The PowerPoint. I don't know how to do those. So I did it on a, yeah, I couldn't remember the name of it, but I brought it up and I showed it to everybody. This is, you know, I know, this, we do have this, this isn't, we have a little generational thing here, and I brought it to everybody and showed them what it is. This is how much you can go up. But, and we, we all get that. And there was a lot of department heads, we were actually glad about that, they didn't know how the budgeting part was done, but there only is so much to go around. And I did explain that last year, that last year there was like about a million three, million four, and, you know, the city had, on the city side, we went up 400,000. It was one, we added one FTE on the whole city side. I mean, it was, actually, it was, we added two and subtracted one. Fernando put the IT department, get cut one, and fire department went up one, and assessing went up one, because that was what we could afford. And we had a lot of meetings last year with the, you know, IAC around insurance. Did, I want to kind of answer one thing, though, that I think you're getting at. Did I talk before about redistricting before that, that meeting? Had that come up? Yeah, I brought it up several times in meetings in, in different ways. I kept putting my hand up and saying, I think we need to think of something different to do. And certainly brought it up at the budget meeting, that I wondered if we could, you know, we could afford that. But we do do our best to communicate and to talk and listen, and, you know, sometimes there's little stumbling blocks, like over transportation. But I think we're two good people trying to get to the end, and we're gonna work together to get there. This is a team, and it's one city, and that's what we have to do.
So I'm trying to figure out how to shorten what I had written to you all. So I'll say that the email, the first thing I just want to say is, having been in this fight with you, this, to fund our schools two years ago, I know how much you care about this, and I know we did that together. And so I am hopeful that we can figure out a solution to this. I know, I know how much you care about this, and, and I'm just trying to wrap my mind around what exactly is, is going on as we prepare to vote on the budget. And I see the email that requests level service, and I know that my, or my understanding, my current understanding is that for the schools to be funded at level service would require something like a 5% increase. That's what I'm hearing, and I see you shaking your head, Erin. So do you, first of all, do you disagree with that? That to fund at level service would require a 5% increase? Because I'm getting different messages, and...
Yes.
Yes, you disagree with that?
Yes.
So you, so you, do you believe that all of the teachers could stay and all of the children could get, all of our students could get the same services at the, at the, with basically spending the same amount of money, a little bit less than we did last year?
Do I believe that?
Yeah.
Yes, I do.
Okay. I have so many questions about how to make that possible. Do, how do we make that possible?
I'm getting help here.
Sure, yeah.
We're still spending more per student this year than we did last year.
Okay.
That was, I would just say this. This is an in-depth conversation, like, there's, there's so much there, but one of the, one of the figures that's in that budget, I'm just gonna go right back to that, this is, I'm getting into the weeds here, but I have to. I'm gonna go right back to that revolving account. That out-of-district tuition that is one of the main drivers for that budget going up is allegedly an increase of a million and a half in a year. We put forward last year a budget for out-of-district tuition. We all voted for $483,000 to go into that line item, okay? And it was reduced by $169,000. That actually makes a big difference. What was said, and I would ask you all to go listen to the May 1st meeting, timestamp seven minutes and 45 seconds, you can hear him saying that he's gonna take $300,000 out of count 1504, it's a special ed revolving, and that he did that every year. That did not happen. I sent you in your packets the, the actual printouts of Munis for three years. In three years, what did we take out of that account? We're getting these, we're getting children in here. We've spent $3,500 out of that account. What does that mean? It means that now there's a million dollars in an account, and it looks like we're short. Basically, that's how I'm gonna explain it. You said you were gonna take $300,000 from a stabilization that we had, put it towards that, instead, you reduced the appropriation that we had, and now you're saying we're spending a million and a half more. Well, that's semantics, but it's also numbers, and they're not there. You can see in the things, the attachments that I sent, of which there are many, that I would like you to look at that, because the numbers don't lie. That did not happen. It's still sitting there. So if you just change that, okay, and, and, which we did, we did. So I'm gonna get, so that's definitely there. Do I think that we need to do things differently? I do. I do. We're gonna have a high school next year, it seems to be, there's a, I think what the superintendent meant was, there's a motion for reconsideration on that, because a lot of, some of us didn't feel like we had all the information, so it may be reconsidered or not. In all likelihood, it sounds like we'll probably go ahead with the plan as it is, which will mean that there are 300 students in the high school, in the most energy-efficient building that all of us are still paying for. We're paying 1.3 million, 1.32 million every single year until 2039. We owe 18.2 million dollars more, and we will continue to pay for that, and we'll be running a, we'll be running two very large buildings. One is 100, the biggest one is 170,000 square feet, the new one. The middle school is 120,000 square feet, I sent you this. We'll be running both of them, half-full, a new one and an older one, each with three principals, four custodians, all the secretaries, and nurses. Two years ago, we had 500 children in that school. I didn't make those numbers. I didn't want things to change. I didn't want anybody to have to move fast or make a decision fast, but you look at those meetings, and I think you know me, because many of you have served with me. I keep raising, didn't I raise my hand when I was with all of you? I sure did. I kept raising my little hand. I know different finance people that wished I'd go away, because I keep raising... I know different finance people that wished I'd go away, because I keep raising my little hand. Well, that's what I do now. I kept raising my little hand there. But let me tell you this, and Catherine, this really matters. I'm looking at the budget right now. I'm everybody's worst nightmare. Every department head that's sitting here behind me, okay? Let me tell you, do you know what I do? I go through each, you know, they get their budget. I go through each line, then I click on the little envelope, you know? Each one of the envelopes for 2025, 2024, and 2023. If they haven't used something, oh my goodness, if anybody would think of increasing it by two thousand dollars when you haven't used any of it, whoops, that's not happening, okay? We have a line item in the school budget. It's line item, whatever it is. Line item, oh, I wrote it in the thing. There's thirteen thousand dollars in it. It was for like little school committee extras. I forget exactly what the name of it was. We've never used it in three years, thirteen thousand dollars. That line item wouldn't be there if I was doing, but it's not my budget, okay? I looked because you asked. And, and I do mine, line by line by line. And now I'm going back again, looking like, how many of those books did you buy? Did you say that you needed stamps? Kathy Scott will tell you. I went, she will. I'll go back and say, you didn't use all the stamp money, so I saw they didn't use the printing money. I reduced it by, I'll do it by a thousand dollars. You know why I do it? Well, I like numbers for one thing. But I'm responsible to the taxpayers, to each of you. I am responsible to educate the children. I am responsible to seniors, who, or other people that can't afford their tax bills. So gall dang it, I'm not the best speaker in the whole world, but you've got a real good math major here. And I found three line items. That was a thirty thousand dollar line item, a fifteen thousand dollar line item, and a thirteen. That's a lot. That's a whole person, isn't it? More than a whole person for some jobs.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, sorry.
I've got Councillor Toronto and also Councillor Healy, and then we can come back to folks who have already spoken, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I understand the pains that are going to be coming up over the next two months. The superintendent left before I could ask these questions, but one thing I want to point out to folks that we've been told, and it's been reiterated even at school committee meetings. Superintendent makes these decisions. They make the decisions on what money is appropriate to them. Just like every other department head, Marlowe's got to make the decisions, depending on what we, we give them. Chief, back, back of the room, you're going to have to make decisions with what you get. I do not want to hear, I'm preempting what, Anthony, sorry, preempting what might be reported to, to degrade what we're going to have to do, or what your choices are going to have to be in the budget, and push blame, and then throw out slurs of, you know, the, but the children, but the children. We all care about the children. We all would love to see everything that we need in this city funded. The money is not there. It just isn't there. So I'm, I'm saying that to get ahead of it, but I also want to point out, before any fingers are pointed, the superintendent makes the decisions on what happens with the money. And there has been no short of recommendations from the public, from us, from other committees, on a very heavy administrative breakdown of what's happening. And if those choices are made and teachers have to be cut, it's not on us. I just want to put that out there. The other part is, are there, do you see, when you're looking at something like the school budget, we spend a lot of money, sorry, I see his name still off on the board, but we spend a lot of money on a business manager for the schools. We actually spend, I think it's almost, hmm, one hundred and seventy-five percent what the superintendent makes on a business administrator for a business manager for the schools. How many, how many positions would that supply for the schools? How many teachers would that pay for? I believe it's something to the tune of around two hundred and eighty thousand dollars we pay TMS to administer the school funds. Sorry to go back in the day, I'm not that old, but back in the day, we didn't have business management for the schools. The superintendent did that job. They did the budget. No other department gets a business manager to help them with their budget and help them with their administrative costs, especially to the tune of probably, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but we now have a superintendent and an assistant superintendent whose combined salaries are just a little bit more than what we pay the business administrator, business manager, whatever the title is, for the schools. That comes to, if you add all this together, almost six hundred thousand dollars. Three positions, three positions to run the finances of our schools. That, to me, is the colossal waste of money. And for that, for that, for that department to be crying poor on some of these, when they could be making their own adjustments internally, and they don't want to listen to anybody else because we are not in the schools and we don't know, and we're so naive, and we don't have any idea what we're talking about.
Point of order. I'm sorry. These are not questions for the mayor, and it seems like these are aimed at someone who is not even at the superintendent specifically.
Sure. So my question to you, my question to you, Mayor, is in making an adjustment to what you're predicting for the school budget, are there recommendations that you have made or suggested to the superintendent in your talks, you say you have a meeting every two weeks, on how those numbers could be condensed? How they could be cut in other ways that wouldn't have to be such a gloom and doom off the lower end?
I feel like we are getting into this, but did we talk about what we were going to do in those meetings? No, because we were told that was a function of the school committee to decide. And so we're supposed to have those meetings at the school committee, and the school committee is supposed to decide what happens. So that's where I kept raising my hand about those. That's what happened. That's how that, that's how that goes down. And, and, yeah, I wouldn't want to say what somebody else's should do, what somebody else should be doing with this right now. I don't feel right about that. I'm a part of that team as well, you know? I try to say this, what I think, when I'm a member of the committee. It's tough.
So I have Councillor Healy next, and then Councillor Perry.
Thank you. I'm going to push this away because I'm really loud as it begins with, if I don't get an echo. There we go. So first, I don't envy the position you're in right now, but I do want to reflect, it's very important that everybody understands when times get hard, we have to make hard decisions, right? And for our department heads, the mayor's office, we're looking at these budget cuts, and you do what any responsible business, family, or city does. You sacrifice things. It's unfortunate, but it's what we have to do to make our budget work, right? So I'm going to just make a suggestion that we've kind of looked at as a business that might help the city, because you mentioned the health insurance issue. We're looking at incent, providing incentives to employees that choose to go on spouses' insurance instead. So it'd be a hundred dollars more in a paycheck that they would get, and it would get them off our insurance. What it does is it puts four hundred bucks or four thou, a little forty-eight hundred dollars in their pocket a year as an employee, and we're not covering that fourteen percent increase in insurance for that employee. So maybe just something for the city to consider in the future.
Thank you. I actually did already bring that up. Somebody else brought that to our attention. They're doing that in one of our neighboring towns. And I don't have the explanation written down of why I was told that, no, we couldn't do that, so I'm not going to tell you. But I checked with HR. There's another municipality that does that, and I don't want to speak off the cuff because I only like to talk about things that I know about. But I did ask, because we're like not leaving any stone unturned. We had meetings right after last year, because we couldn't believe it would happen two years in a row, that it would be this high. We reached out to every other person that might give you a chance at insurance, and they wouldn't, they won't take us, because we actually have a lot, people are overusing their premiums, which means a lot of people really having their worst year, if you know what I mean. So people didn't want us. All the people that, you know, we, we had the IAC, that's the leaders of East Union. They all came together, and we were going to see if we could change the adjustment from eighty-twenty to seventy-thirty or seventy-five-twenty. And they all gave us suggestions to go look at, to people, and we did that, but they wouldn't take us. And then we did look at that, but I don't remember what the reason was. We checked with the attorney, and Diana from HR could answer that question better, because I don't remember the answer. But I also want to tell you that after we had that school committee meeting, the next day, I spoke with our delegation about it, about how, you know, awful the school, how the school committee meeting was. And they were talking about what happens with other towns. They, Joe Comerford was saying, they've reached out to this, I didn't know there was a Department of Insurance, a DOI that was another, a whole nother little acronym. But they've reached out to them to see if, if they can do anything, because this is crippling towns. But this is what I will say to you. It's time. It's time to think of something different. Not for people to, to stay in the same thing and say, we're going to keep doing the same thing. Because I don't make up numbers. I just look at them. They're changing, and that means that we need to change with that. I'm sorry, I'm going on.
Councillor Perry?
Well, you kind of already answered my question. I was going to say, I have heard grumblings from the grandstands that the city didn't do enough about the health insurance increase, and that you guys sat on your hands and let it happen, which, so I wanted to give you the opportunity to respond to that, but you just did. And aging workforce means higher health costs. It'd be great if every teacher here was thirty and under in their rookie years, but not. We have senior people who use their health insurance, and so is going to cost. But we also have a large pool of employees, so there should be a balance between the two. So good luck. I just wanted to get that out there, that the city wasn't sitting on their hands the last year about the health insurance increase. You guys were negotiating, you were talking, you were looking at options. So thank you for that.
Last year, I even called the head of the hospital, because they had something to do with this. When I first got into being a mayor, I didn't know why I was meeting all these people, why they all wanted to come, come in and meet. But right after I, I had met him, I had a call and asked if there was anything that they could do, say how we'd worked together for so many years to see if we could get it down just a little bit. It was like a quarter percent. I mean, he tried all his best as well, but we didn't leave any stone unturned.
Councillor Gollum, did you have another question?
Yeah, and I'm still trying to figure out how to formulate it. I hear, one thing that I saw in your email, I can't, I don't remember your words verbatim, but it was basically saying that your suggestion to close the middle school was one possibility, like looking at, looking at how underused these buildings are. This is one possibility. And I hear you inviting people back to the drawing board about redistricting. And I see how, from afar, I have not watched the process closely, but it sounds like that was a conversation that took a lot of time. And, and I also hear you saying, I, I, you use the metaphor, the train is moving, you got to jump out of the way. And for this change to be made, if there is, if we do redistrict in a different way, in a way that upholds our commitments to equity, which you said in your, in your presentation on Wednesday, I'm just wondering about how much time there is to make these changes? And it, and if there is some type of middle path that, if, if, I mean, the schools are saying that nineteen people will need to be fired. That's what I'm, I'm hearing in front, and as I shared, as I, as I've said before, like when two, when two people who I trust on both sides are saying very different things, I, there feels like I'm trying to get information. I'm trying to understand what's happening. And I feel like I have a responsibility to do this. So, and I, and I know you try, I know you, you, I see you work to get information too, having worked beside you. And so I'm, I'm hearing very different things, and I'm wondering about the timeline. If, if I hear the conversation is going to continue next, next month at school committee, if a different decision is made, is it, how does it happen? How do you see it, how would you see it unfolding where, if it takes more than next September to make these changes, how do we make sure that students aren't hurt in the process?
So I just want to take that about time. I think, I have great faith in people, and I think if we need to get something done, we can do it if we work together, and we believe that we can do that. I think, I've never done any bus routes in my life, but I've responded to mass casualty events, and we changed directions very quickly, and we took care of people how we needed to. It's a terrible thing. You put a tag on somebody that you didn't think you could take care of. You know what? Really, when things happen, you sort of do what you have to do. This is not good. It's not good, and it's not getting better. We lost two hundred and fifty students in three years. It's predicted to go down to thirteen fifteen. We all know what is happening federally with the health insurance costs. I'm not making this up. So what do I think we could do? I believe in us. We're going to win that Strong Town Award. My, my words. At least we're going to get to the final four. And if you all write to your friends, we're going to do even better than that. Yep. So you can do what you have to do, and harming people along the way is going to be really pretty harmful if you, you, you have, we have a city to run. Not one department or another, but a whole city. And I tried to write that in the middle. We have an obligation to educate our children and to make sure the water's, we're drinking good water. And so you have to figure that out, and these are all hitting us at once. So I believe that we could do what we needed to do, but that's me.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quickly, while we have you here, I know we're going to talk about the pilot program. It's motion number four. And so if councillors had any questions about the solar, this might be a good time to ask those directly to the mayor.
I think I have Randy in assessing is on, and he's supposed to be on this. If not, I have to go back to, or do I have this little printer?
Hi, I'm here.
Oh, good.
He is on, so.
Phew. Thanks, Randy.
Did anybody have any questions about motion four, while we're here? Okay, then Randy, you don't have to stay if we don't have any questions, but just wanted to give you the opportunity.
I think I had a question, which is, it looks like we'll be getting fifteen thousand dollars a year for a number of years. What would the tax payments have been? Maybe I missed it in the paperwork if we had gotten the taxes instead?
Randy, do you want to take that?
Yeah, the exact number, you know, I don't have in front of me, and this is like an averaged total that kind of, you know, breaks it down in a certain way. Hold on a second, I've got a, I'm trying to pull something up here. So the way these things are structured, you know, it's, it's a tax stability measurement that provides a way for the generating company to meet its annual tax obligation. And that's why it's set up with that fifteen thousand per year. So it, it gives them something that's predictable and stable over the life of the agreement, and, and it doesn't front-load it like we'd be getting a lot more in the beginning, and then a lot less at the end. And so it, it makes it something that is easier for them to, to, you know, do their predicting and, and meet whatever criteria it is that they have. And that's part of why, so I don't have the exact breakdown. I have seen it. And that's part of why, so I don't have the exact breakdown, I have seen it, and it's, you know, more, it's over twenty thousand to begin with, that, that we would start with, but then we would be, you know, much lower, and this is like an average total. And that's, you know, the, the point of the, the pilot, is to have that information or, or have it so that it's a more reliable, uh, amount, not only for us, but also for the, the company investing in the solar.
Thank you. Counselor Mesut Ozil.
Hi, Randy. Um, I printed, now, I don't have it, I think I have it here somewhere, but I had printed out the, uh, property card. You had mentioned to me in passing, um, that that property's been split. Is, is that the case, so?
Yeah, twelve forty-five Berniston Road.
Right.
And it was something that went through the planning board, and there was a portion of it that has been, uh, sold by the owner, and that's where the solar field is being located.
So, there's no structures on that portion of the property, that, there's no longer any structures. The structures are on what hasn't been sold, correct?
Correct, it, it stayed with the existing parcel and the, the buildings that were on the existing parcel, and this was just basically excess land.
Right.
That was, uh, that, that the solar field is put on.
Um, off the top of your head, do you know what that, uh, value is of the property? What, what they would be paying in property tax to the, to the land presently?
And that's something that was, um, o- only recently just cut out, uh, because of the timing of when the plan happened, and so, that's something that I could get, but I don't have, you know, on the, off the tip of my tongue, it would be based on the building lot, maybe I could figure it out if you give me a minute or so. It'd be based on the building lot value for that area of town, and then the excess land would be an additional, uh, four thousand dollars per acre.
Okay, I, I'm just, you know, land value goes up over the years, this is a constant number what they're giving us over the, for the next twenty years, fifteen K plus. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that the land value is, the taxes on that land right now is not near that, it's probably, I don't know, somewhere closer to six or eight thousand, if that, but, um, I'm just trying to like do the math, if in the long run, if this is, we're ahead of the game doing what we're doing with this, and, and then, is that land even viable down the road to build on? Because I know there's a lot of wetlands back there, and maybe they couldn't, somebody couldn't build on that anyway, so, I, I was just curious, you know, um, to see what the value was compared to what the income's gonna be for the next twenty years. It sounds like we're ahead of the games, but just curious. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
I don't, I don't think that the land value increases that much, and just as an FYI, I was on planning board when this was negotiated, so it was quite a while ago, and did you know the planning board makes field trips? We actually would go out, we'd have site plan reviews, we'd, we'd actually, we marched off through there to see where they were gonna put that. Fascinating.
Counselor Garrett?
I know we thought we escaped the school conversation, but I've been thinking as people have been talking, and I haven't said much yet about it. Um, so just very briefly, I'm a public school teacher, so the, and we have certainly had budget issues in the town I work in, Hatfield, to the point where we had to pass a two-and-a-half percent override to keep the school open, uh, the high school that I work at. So, in the time in which that uncertainty was there, was terrifying, like absolutely terrifying, to be in the classroom and be wondering if, you know, fortunately I have some seniority, if my colleague wouldn't be there later. Um, so that's less, I'm sorry to go on so long about that, but, um, Counselor Gordon mentioned communication, and Counselor Toronto mentioned some specific, you know, ideas about what's inefficient in the budget, and you also, you know, mentioned, you know, trying to raise your hand at meetings, and I watched the special meeting on Monday, I wasn't able to attend, and one of the things that really struck me is the school committee seemed genuinely surprised, which I was surprised about. Um, and so, I guess it's less of a question about this year's budget and more about the process and the future. So, I'm thrilled to hear that you're meeting with the superintendent on a bi-weekly basis, I think that's fabulous, I'm glad those kind of meetings are happening. What can we, you know, do differently for next year's budget to keep us from coming back to this place and this kind of conversation? Um, I'm also, you know, one of the reasons I'm asking the question is you mentioning the federal issue. The Department of Education, if folks don't realize, subsidizes tremendous amounts of special education, which is one of the huge, biggest cost drivers for every school district in the country. I'm deeply worried about that for every kid in the country, and I'm, and again, I think next year's gonna be even harder than this year. So, I think if this is tough, and it is, it's only gonna get tougher, and whatever we need to do to make sure that it's not as hard as this, I mean, that may be impossible, but again, what can we do differently for next year to keep us from feeling like we're talking and passing from each other, when we again, do all have the same goals at the very least level services, you know? So, thank you. I know that's a complicated question, but.
So, I have been saying this since I got on here, so I said this in my first meeting, we need to start looking at different options, I said this, and they're recorded. Um, we have six schools, um, in the packet, I sent, there's other towns, nobody else has six schools with this number of children. Um, consolidating things, reaching out to other towns, I've been reaching out to other towns on this and other issues, because we're all not gonna survive if we are just thinking about just doing things the same way. Um, so, I will keep doing that, trying to the best of my ability, it is time that we, we have to think about something different, and those changes are difficult. When we did that in the emergency room, and there was a reduction in force and you had to change, we created a new shift, you know, an eye shift in the middle, because that's when more people would come, from eleven in the morning till seven at night, it wasn't fun to make that change, because people were used to coming in at seven in the morning. It's, it's very hard, and people get very attached to the, to the way that they're doing things, but I think the writing's on the wall, I will do my best. Um, yeah.
Thank you both. That's it?
That was, that was so easy, thank you. Getting really good at these questions though, so, over and out.
So now we have Amy to talk to us about the work that she does in economic development.
Now that you're all warmed up. Um, thanks so much for having me. I was asked, I was asked to talk in particular, to give an update on the Warming Center, which is where I thought I'd start, and then, um, five minutes isn't nearly enough time to talk about what we do, so I'm just gonna hit a couple of highlights, and then I'm happy to field whatever questions you might have. Um, for those of you who aren't aware, our department coordinated a Warming Center, um, operated by the City of Greenfield in partnership with a variety of departments in the city and nonprofits and service providers in town. It was on Chapman Street, the Salvation Army allowed us to use their space. Um, uh, with the support of Chief Dodge and Chief Strahan, we staffed some of the volunteer slots with police officers and firefighters. The rest of the volunteer slots were staffed by community members, actually several of whom are here tonight, and volunteers from the Medical Reserve Corps. And we'd served a total of five hundred and ninety-four individuals over the course of four months that the center was open. That's a little bit of a low count, because we opened in December, um, but our first week or so of open days, we were still getting our feet under us, and we didn't do quite a good a job of taking a head count, so five hundred and ninety-four is on the low side. We were open a total of forty-nine overnights, um, which translated into five hundred and eighty-eight volunteer hours. We were open from seven PM until seven AM, and the volunteer hour shifts were four hours long, seven to eleven, eleven to three, and then three to seven. Um, most nights we averaged fifteen to eighteen guests, our highest attendance night was twenty-six. Um, there was a huge need for this space, this was a unique model, no other, um, community in our region operated an overnight center like this, um, and the need was so great that we had guests who were coming from other communities, um, because their shelters were full, and there was literally no other place to go on some of those coldest nights. So, we're incredibly grateful to everybody that made it possible. It was funded this year through some one-time state funding. Um, we imagine that we will have to do this again next year. Salvation Army has already stepped up and offered the space again. We have volunteers who have already said they're interested in doing it again, the Medical Reserve Corps is on board. Um, we're arranging some, some training and some, um, better organizing to get volunteers feeling a little more comfortable with what their, um, job is, now that we actually understand what it looks like to operate the Warming Center. Uh, and so, we're looking for funding, my department spends a lot, a lot of our time applying for grants, so we have submitted one grant already, um, seeking to fund the Warming Center for next winter, and I imagine that was just the first of several. Um, but that's a picture of the Warming Center, I think, fingers crossed that we are done with it for, um, this season. Uh, we are gonna start planning again, I think we decided in May, we would have a couple of early planning sessions, um, and then probably get underway in full force in August with some serious planning around it. So, happy to answer questions, I, I can keep going, and then, um, we can do questions at the end if that works. Um, while we're talking about homelessness, um, my department does a lot of work in housing and homelessness. I did just want to mention, I know that the council is, um, creating a, an ad hoc committee on community relations on, um, on working with the unhoused, and I just took a quick look at my calendar and just myself, who, for whom this is a fraction of my work, I attend seven different monthly committee meetings that deal with homelessness in our city and in our region. And so, my one ask of you, I, I love that you want to hear about this issue and get involved, I would just ask for a mission that's, um, that's clear and contained, because I am a little worried, um, about overlap, I already see the same folks at many of these seven meetings, and so, um, there's only so fine a slice you can cut on this particular pie, but I'm thrilled that the city council wants to engage on this issue. Um, I think it's wonderful to engage proactively, and so I'm grateful that you are, um, looking to do that. Uh, my department right now, I mentioned we do a lot of grant writing, the biggest grant, or one of the biggest grants we do every year is CDBG funding, that's Community Development Block Grant Funding. Um, that is funding that supports, um, primarily low-income folks in Greenfield and areas of housing, it also supports infrastructure primarily in low-income communities and in slum and blight areas. Um, we have an application for this coming fiscal year, which is due April fourteenth, we anticipate getting eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funding, which will be divided, divided between infrastructure work, housing rehab, and then, um, five social service projects. This year, our social service projects are focused around, um, issues of, uh, food insecurity, homelessness, and real basic needs, just because everybody's budgets everywhere are so tight and the need is so great, um, that, that we felt like that's where those dollars were best spent. If you would like to hear more details about this, if I could just put in a plug, my department is required to hold a public meeting on our FY twenty-five application, and we are holding it next Friday from four to five, um, in City Hall and Hybrid, it's on the city calendar, and you are all welcome to attend in whatever way doesn't violate open meeting law. Um, also, while I'm talking about CDBG, um, we are working to update our Slum and Blight District, that's a really terrible name that the state has created, um, but what it essentially means is if we can define an area where there is a large percentage of buildings that are rundown and in need of, um, assistance, and we can, we can convince the state that we really mean that those buildings are in this area, it makes it a lot easier for us to use CDBG funding to improve infrastructure in that area. Currently, our Central Commercial District is a designated Slum and Blight District, that designation lasts for ten years, our ten years are up in twenty twenty-six, and so, we are working with FERCOG to both renew that designation, because I think we still need some infrastructure support in our Central Commercial District, and also to extend it primarily in the area that is down Deerfield Street, Hope Street, and River Street and that Deerfield Street corridor, um, in the hopes that we can also get some funding to that area. So, um, we'll be doing a public meeting with FERCOG to share information about that, um, in particular, hoping that folks in that community will come out if they have questions.
Counselors, do you have any questions for Amy? So, Gordon and then Garrett, please.
Hi, Amy, thanks so much for being here.
Hello.
Um, I'm also in some of, a few of those meetings with you, but you are in a lot of meetings about a lot of things, and we appreciate it. Um, regarding, well, first of all, I just want to say that the Warming Center has just been amazing, thank you so much. Um, our deepest gratitude to everybody who made that possible, I was getting, when there were open volunteer shifts, I was getting emails from like six different directions saying, and every time that I went on, you know, even if I answered it quickly, to, to look at the open shifts, often they were already filled. Um, and I think that that's just such an incredible testament to the way that people work together to, to make this happen. Um, on CDBG funding, I know that that's a HUD program, a federal.
Yes.
Program from the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Yes.
Um, and I'm curious, you know, if you have concerns about whether that funding is actually gonna come through and, and what happens for us if it doesn't?
Yes, I spend my day balancing my levels of anxiety. Um, we are okay for this coming fiscal year, because our, we are a mini entitlement community, so our HUD funding doesn't come directly from HUD, comes from HUD to the state, and then it comes from EOHLC, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, to the city. Um, that, those federal dollars for this upcoming year have already been given to the state and are segregated with the state. So, we are good through this coming, um, cycle of CDBG. I am very worried about what happens to it after that, for sure, with no good. I, I watch the news every day and just wonder. But I think it is good at least that we know that we, or we feel confident that we are good through this next cycle. Sure.
So, I was actually gonna also ask about the block grant funding, so.
Yes.
That makes sense, that's the answer. I have another federal funding question about, um, the, I don't know if this is your department or if it's the DPW, but the potential Main Street redesign, I know that the Department of Transportation is looking with a skeptical eye towards bike lane-based projects.
Mm-hmm.
Which is, to me, horrifying. I don't know if there's been any sort of input that you've gotten on that project, or if it's in a similar boat to this year's CBDG, did I say it right?
CDBG, but that's.
Sorry, um, alphabet soup.
Totally.
I have another question, but it's, well, I'll hold it.
That's gonna be a fast answer for me, that one is actually very much the DPW, I don't know.
Okay.
Much about the, I mean, I feel like, yes, transportation grants are questionable, that one I have not heard a lot of worry about.
Okay.
Um, it's, yeah, that one I, that one is not really on my worry screen anywhere near as much as things like, um, for affordable housing are, but.
Great, and so my other question is not about things you're worried about, but I know there's a lot of scuttlebutt that all hear little drips and drabs of about exciting things that are coming up in Greenfield, many of which maybe can't be fully said publicly because, you know, it's not a done deal. Um, so I'd just be curious if there's anything you're particularly excited about, I know your department has got its hands in all sorts of cool things, so I think the public should hear.
I am so glad you asked that question, because that's my second.
It's an underhand pitch.
After the doom and gloom of page one, you just softball that to me for page two. Um, we, we do also work on joyous, exciting things. Um, the one that I can't say very much about, but I will, um, tease it just enough to get maybe Anthony excited, and perhaps some of you, is, um, we are just about at a point where, um, the GRA, so our department staff's the GRA, Greenfield Redevelopment Authority, which owns, um, many of you may know, the First National Bank on Bank Row, and we anticipate doing an RFP, um, with some serious interest, uh, probably early summer. That, we are very excited, yes. No, don't count any chickens or eggs or even baskets, but, um, we have some folks who have been consistently interested, engaged in conversation with us enough that we feel, um, like we're ready to do an RFP. So, um, we'll be having a GRA meeting in the not-too-distant future. Um, uh, also, one exciting thing that, um, I can certainly talk about, because it's happening tomorrow, is JDUK is opening on Main Street. Um, our, our department does a lot of behind-the-scenes talk with developers and of housing and commercial work that we frequently can't cheer about until days like tomorrow. Um, and we are thrilled that JDUK, who's moving into two seventy Main Street, is moving into two seventy. um, is gonna be doing their ribbon cutting. They're bringing a ton of classrooms for childcare, which is both wonderful for the jobs that it will bring to Greenfield and just the need for childcare in Greenfield that our department hears about, and I'm sure some of you do too, um, as well as, uh, driving school and performing arts classes. Um, so, we're very excited about that. Um, we are also working closely with the Greenfield Business Association, the GBA, on many of their events and conversations. They've been leading a great group of roundtables. Um, we just met a couple of weeks ago with property owners, which was a wonderful conversation that I think used to happen with more frequency than it does now. And there are some new property owners, um, who have invested in Greenfield, and it was just really exciting to hear, um, their enthusiasm and their hopes for Greenfield, um, and to hear their conversation with some of the longtime Greenfield property owners who weighed in with their wisdom. Um, and there is a roundtable coming up next week, uh, regarding events that I'm looking forward to, where we're bringing together all the folks that do, um, events of all types in Greenfield to talk about what they have on the horizon for this year, ways that the city or the GBA could support them, um, and also a space to share funding concerns, because arts, um, are frequently on the chopping block for funding, and, um, uh, we need more of them, so... Sure. I could, I could talk for hours, but I'm guessing that I am up against my ten minutes, so I'm happy to field whatever questions you would like to throw at me, but...
Any additional questions, counselors?
And the, although, if I could just add one thing about the Strong Towns Contest, um, I don't want it to get lost. We were nominated because a Greenfield resident nominated us. They reached out to our department and said, "We really wanna nominate Greenfield because we have, we think Greenfield has this amazing story and great vibe." Um, and so, we worked with them to submit the nomination, but it was purely, uh, Greenfield resident-driven. Um, and I, nothing could've made me happier that day. So, I'm slightly dumbfounded that we're all the way into the Elite Eight, so please vote and continue to surprise me.
Thank you. It's good to have some good news.
Exactly.
And March Madness at the same time, so I love it, I love it. So, our next item of business is our, um, public comment. So, for those of you who haven't been here for public comment, uh, we had a sign-up sheet, so if you still wanna sign up, you can come up. Uh, when you come up, you'll have three minutes, um, state your name and where you live. That's part of the rules. So, the first person I have on the list is William Comfort. Uh, push the button so it'll turn green.
Oh, green. I'm William Comfort, and I'm at three ninety-three Main Street. I've been a volunteer for the last year at a community access radio station, where I host a show, Radio Liberté. I am here to report an incident of serious concern involving GCTV's director, Andrew Hutchinson. In August last year, while volunteering at the station, he put his hand on my shoulder, looked into my eyes, and told me that he loved me. This was shocking and traumatic and horrifying, and I rebuked his advance. The Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one five one B, Section one, defines sexual harassment as behavior that makes the workplace so intimidating, hostile, humiliating, or sexually offensive that it gets in the way of doing your job. This is called a hostile work environment. Since I began at WMCBLP, Hutchinson's behavior has been alarming and unprofessional. Targeted harassment continued unabated and has been a pattern since. I have distributed to you a copy of the communicate I sent to the GCTV board as important in our community is made aware of the sexual harassment against me and the attempts to silence me since Hutchinson made sexual advances towards me. On February twenty-one this year, while I was instructing a fellow community member, Hutchinson threatened to call the police and threw me out of the building for referencing an insurance policy liability that another member of the staff had discussed with me. The Commonwealth Civil Rights Laws prohibit Hutchinson from denying anyone access to a place of public accommodation. Publicly accessed TV and radio is mandated under the Cable Communication Act of nineteen eighty-four, codified at US Code forty-seven, Section five thirty-one. Subsequent to the incident on February twenty-one, Hutchinson removed my show from the station masthead, scheduled other shows in my time slot, and expunged my work, all without notifying me directly. This impulsive, reactionary, retaliatory behavior is alarming. This type of misconduct should not be tolerated. Civil rights protections, processes, and procedures exist in Greenfield, which should extend to those of us who volunteer at the radio station. We should be free from harassment, verbal threats, and intimidation. We should receive equal treatment under the law. You, as city counselors, have governing responsibility for protecting the rights of city employees as well as volunteers. This is about equity and fairness. As a witness to an ongoing investigation, I should not be contacted by the subject of my harassment, and yet, yesterday, Andrew Hutchinson contacted me directly. Counselors, none of us serving the city should be subject to sexual predatory behavior and harassment, nor should be retaliated against, threatened, and removed from places of public accommodation. Hutchinson's misconduct puts everyone in our community at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list is Mel Goodwin.
My name is Melody Goodwin. I live at twenty-nine Meadow Lane in Greenfield. And I am here for two reasons, and I'm gonna really try to do three minutes. One is 'cause you're talking about me without talking about me, so I want you to know who I am. I currently serve on the school committee. I sit in the bad school committee member's seat, or council goal obsees, I'm so sorry. I've been told that I'm not allowed to ask questions. I've been told, um, I ask too many questions. And recently, I attended a subcommittee for the budget, and I was asked to vote on a budget without a budget. I was asked to vote without a budget. There was two pieces of paper with increases in the budget, but there was no budget. I was a math teacher. I've been an educator for forty years. I've been an administrator since nineteen ninety-six. I have fought with every tooth and nail for school budgets so teachers in paras do not lose their jobs. I have stood in front of thousands of people to fight for what's right for kids. There is not a thing I have not done to make sure kids get the best that they can. So, when I was asked to vote, I was told by the chair of that subcommittee to have faith in the superintendent, to have faith each time I asked a question. And, I'm sorry, in twenty-six years as an administrator, district, and school, I have never been asked to vote on a budget without a budget in front of me. I have speed dial for the State Ethics Commission because I'm asking hard questions about the way our school committee runs. There is a theme of entitlement. They believe that we are supposed to rubber stamp what is ever put in front of us. A member of your council was reprimanded by something that I said, and that shouldn't have happened. I was publicly reprimanded for using the word "secret" when I asked why the budget was a secret, and I was told the word "secret" was disrespectful. This last school committee meeting was the most disrespectful meeting I have ever watched. One teacher actually sent me an email saying that I was gaslit by the other members of the committee. I didn't even know what that word meant, but I looked it up. The behavior of our school committee members to the mayor is appalling. I have taught children from the age of five to sixteen, "If you can't say something nice, don't say it at all." They have bullied, they have harassed, and I know those definitions by law 'cause I've suspended children for those actions. Entitlement to money, which is given to a city with taxes, is not something that exists. It is our right as school committee members to ask questions, and I'm going to tell you, as somebody who has lived and breathed that school budget, that I have no confidence in that budget.
Thank you. I have Joan Marie Jackson next, please.
Good evening, city council. Is it okay? My name is Joan Jackson, Jo Marie Jackson, of Two Chestnut Hill in Greenfield. Here's why our proposed ADU regulations don't work. Zoning rules today allow me to buy a single-family house and turn it into a two- or three-family house without any special permit. These dwellings do not have to be called an ADU. I can then add one protected ADU outside my home, possibly more by special permit if my lot is big enough. I have converted a one-family lot into a four-family lot, and you, as a neighbor, won't even know about it. My first four-family dwellings just have to be approved by the building inspector. If you assume I bought my house from an elderly couple, and I can now boost it up to three families inside with two parents and two children each, plus eight or nine people in my ADU, the population on that one lot has suddenly gone from two people to as many as fifteen people. We asked state officials, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, this question, quote, "If a municipality chooses, can they limit a house lot to only one ADU, which will be a protected ADU? Are towns required to allow multiple ADUs on a single lot?" The answer we received was, quote, "It is a local option whether to allow more than one ADU per lot." The state officials explained that, quote, "ADUs are a protected use if they are on the same lot as a principal dwelling in a single-family residential district," unquote. He added, "The principal dwelling does not necessarily need to be a single-family home," unquote. The state definition of, quote, "principal dwelling," unquote, is a structure that contains a, at least, one dwelling unit and is located on the same lot as a protected-use ADU. If your principal dwelling has three dwelling units, you can add a protected ADU outside your house as long as, quote, "No other ADU is located on said lot and which is protected." Our Greenfield ordinance does not even define principal dwelling. One of the amendments coming up at the EDC meeting, hearing, on April eighth says, "Once a single protected use has been permitted on a lot, no additional ADUs shall be permitted on a lot." Do I have a few, a minute?
If you could wrap up that sentence, please, thank you.
Okay. Without any limit on ADUs per lot, some parcels could look like old roadside motels with a string of small cottages that were built before zoning. One protected unit per lot eliminates the need for any special permits and site plan, which saves our city review boards from the added burden of processing multiple units. I'd like to be recorded...
Thank you.
Did I say one more sentence?
I said one more sentence, and you got a whole nother minute. No, uh, uh, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Mitchell Spate.
Good evening, city council. I somewhat echo the sentiments that Joan...
Did I cut your name and address, please?
Two Chestnut Hill.
And name, please.
Mitchell Spate. I somewhat echo the sentiments that Joan Jack, Jo Marie Jackson just shared with you. Uh, I've been speaking with quite a few, uh, officials throughout the country regarding ADU. I think your focus has been strictly on bringing in a family or two to live in it. That's not the model that's being presented to most of the, uh, people, who, uh, towns and municipalities that are now dealing with ADU. Uh, Massachusetts is gonna be faced with an ADU situation where corporations will be either buying homes or creating them, and they will be selling them or leasing them to other, whether government, government agencies, nonprofits, or for-profits with long-term leases. They will not be the usual one- or two-year residential leases. We're talking fifteen, twenty-year leases. And if you do your research, you'll find that that's, that's the model they're working with. And, uh, it's sort of, one person sort of related to it as being somewhat Jeffersonian. And, uh, again, I, I think we, we need to slow that, slow this process down. Think about it. Uh, I think we've done some damage control. We've educated the public on, on the ADU. Uh, moving forward regarding height limits, uh, I think you need to pause on that also. Is downtown a historic district? What are the limits? What are you allowed? And how, how, how can you go? Uh, I was a little concerned also, well, no, I won't even mention that one. Uh, I would like to thank, uh, the CPA with rejecting the offer being presented, uh, by the folks out on, uh, Stone Farm Lane. I also noticed, uh, there was another application put through for thirty-four Glenbrook Drive, which was removed at the last minute. Uh, I don't think we should be funding, uh, developers, especially when they're partnering with non, nonprofits, uh, with taxpayers' money, especially when we have elders, uh, who could use that money, uh, as well as it could be used for other forms of housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Denim Lunt.
I think we're live here, folks. That sound okay? Good. Um, I have to, I have to say...
You state your name and address.
Sorry, Denim Lunt. Uh, I live at Sunrise Avenue, Greenfield. Um, I was gonna say that, uh, all the discussion earlier about the school system and the situation rings really true to me. I'll be quick with what I have to say, but I gotta say it. I went to school at the Federal Street North in Federal Fifth and Sixth Grades. I went to the junior high, what was the junior high school, in, uh, seventh and eighth grades. I had kids in the regular high school. And, uh, my head is swimming, including starting with today's recorder, about the recap of what's happening, uh, in the, uh, in the school system. So, my mind is half of what I brought here today, uh, and, and half of what you all spoke about earlier. So, there's a lot going on, for sure. I'm here to follow up a couple of comments that Mitch Spate made earlier, just a couple of minutes ago, that referenced, um, some activities with development in the Stone Farm Lane area, and also another area or two that are marked for, uh, build-outs of things that may or may not create housing for people in need or, or whatever reason. Anyway, being a member of a residential area already in the Stone Farm Lane area, I'm going to dive into that, if I may, because a current proposed development of 24 condo housing units plus 20 co-op houses, calling them co-op, in the Rocky Mountain Park area of North Greenfield would sit on several acres of property near the Connecticut River. It would also closely border a tight-knit neighborhood of 37 long-existing homes, including the Sunrise Ave, Esther Ave, Valley View, and Stone Ridge neighborhoods. There is only one way in and one egress for all of these properties. Resentment from Butters and existing property owners regarding the proposed development is already palpable. Along with quality of life and peace of mind, their property resale values could easily decline. Looming problems with the proposed development would include a minimum of a year and a half of disruption during construction, constant noise and invasion of privacy, septic and water provisions yet to be determined, increased traffic in the neighborhoods, fire hazard and truck accessibility, and increased lighting spillage from the 40 or so added units earmarked, to also include parking areas below a line of Butters and people who live in those areas. It would be, it's quite disturbing. There would also be a loss of homeowner equity for longstanding property owners relying on that equity for retirement, and a possible reduction of city real estate tax income due to tax abatement filings from homeowners over loss of value of their properties. All these build-outs, I've got one minute, yes? All these properties face-
You can finish your sentence, but it's not another minute. Sorry.
May I?
You may finish your sentence, yes.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Assisting people in need of housing is commendable, but the number and density of the proposed new dwellings are incompatible with the character and scale of this long-established neighborhood, which remains a key approval criteria for a special permit review. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Al Norman?
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Al Norman, Grinnell Street in Greenfield. My comments have to do with one of your items on the end of your agenda, accessory dwelling units. Three points. Number one, one ADU per lot is a local option. Any homeowner in Greenfield can turn their single-family home into a two- or three-family dwelling by right. The state is now forcing us to allow any property owner to add one accessory dwelling unit on their property by right. That's four dwellings by right on one lot. But the state is not forcing us to allow more than one ADU on a lot. The Director of Communications at EOHLC told me it's a local option to allow no more than one ADU per lot. I urge the council to put into the ADU regulations supporting our home rule option to say "one ADU on one lot is enough", which really means up to four family dwellings by right on that lot. I do not support the planning board proposal that allows a second ADU on a single-family lot, and I don't think we have the power to say that any ADU on a two-family lot is unprotected. Any dwelling unit a homeowner adds inside their house, up to three units, does not have to be called an ADU. If they want to put an ADU in their yard, it's their first, is their first protected ADU, but it should not, it should stop at four dwelling units. Under our Board of Health rules, nine people can live in an ADU. We need to be careful not to create sardine housing that overcrowds some of our already densely-packed neighborhoods. And I can explain sometime later, if you'll ever ask me, where the nine comes from, is from the Board of Health regulations for occupancy. Second issue, height of buildings. I urge the City Council to table, for now, the proposal to raise the height limit in the Central Commercial District by 60% to 50 to 80 feet high, and the General Commercial District by 50% from 40 to 60 feet high. Much of our CC zone is in a historic district, and the EDC and the planning board should meet with the Historical Commission to discuss what changes they can or cannot do inside our district. And I have seen no research proposal. How many buildings will be targeted for a height increase? Which buildings might be unsuitable for added floors? A plan rationalizing height increases should be referred also to the Master Plan or Sustainable Committee for more review and broader discussion. This is not something we have to speed through. And I'd like to hear what some of our targeted building owners think. Is this something that they even want to talk about? Finally, use of CPA funding. I want to echo the comments you've already heard to applaud the Community Preservation Committee for voting 6 to 2 to decline funding of an $18,000 of our property taxes to experiment on a gray-water treatment proposal for one private developer. This is a business, private business expense that should be paid by the private business, and it is not what our funds from the community development project should be used for.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Please call me if you have any questions.
Thank you. And lastly, we have Pamela Goodwin.
Good evening, City Councilors. My name is Pamela Goodwin, 54 High Street. I wasn't going to speak because I'm kind of tired of public comment, to be honest with you. I'm in a bad mood, so I'll just warn you. I have had a lost cellphone for two days and spent three hours trying to get a different cellphone, which is still not operating. Out of respect for our new mayor, who I think does an excellent job, and I'm so thankful she's a mathematician, because I'm not. I serve on the GSET Board as a commissioner. As a result of that, and after all my years of teaching, I decided I didn't want anything to do with the school committee. Now I find myself back watching the school committee, live and in person, making a public comment, then I go to the special meeting. Made a public comment there, went to Ways and Means, made a stupid statement there. And I sit in this room for almost five years, and it's me and one other person that ever makes a comment in person. And when I ask them why they don't come anymore, they're just like, nobody cares. Nobody listens. Nobody really cares what your comments are. And so I'm feeling very overwhelmed, and I feel like I need a break. I need to take a big break. And I'm going to see if I can take a vacation and find someplace to watch my animals and just get out of the city of Greenfield. Before I go to bed tonight, though, I'm going to get on that laptop, which still works, and I'm going to vote for Strong Town and send it to about everybody that I can find in my email list who lives in Greenfield, that is, because my phone is MIA. I agree with everything Counselor Toronto has said. I have watched the incredible amount of disparaging going toward the mayor. I know that she has been thrown off a committee without anybody choosing to do that except the chair. I remember them saying earlier on, "There was no budget committee, that that was always done by the superintendent." So yea, now we have an ad hoc budget committee, and they don't care, you know, about numbers, because I watched that one, too. It was a fantastic PowerPoint with no numbers. And I'm like, I'm so grateful that Melody Goodwin had courage to come up here and talk about what it's like for her. If you don't get recognized by the chair, you don't get to speak. And I have never seen that in all of the different meetings that I've either attended live or watched after the fact on public, you know, education TV. So I thank you for all your hard work. And I think I need a break. I've worked for 12 years for the State House. I have stopped doing that on lobbying, and I just need to reel it in. And I have been reeling it in. I've been in Housing Greenfield for going almost six years. Thank you for all your hard work, because I know you just love this job. You're all getting rich at it.
Thank you so much. And thank you, everyone, for your comments. We really appreciate your feedback. We do listen, so it's really important. It's 8:30, I think. Can we take a break, y'all? Okay, let's do that. Thank you. All right, welcome back, everyone. We are now moving to motions, orders, and resolutions.
And guess what? No vocal votes. Nobody's online.
Okay, so our first order under motions is the mayor's appointments. Could I have Counselor Gola read that motion, please?
Page 33. Order number fiscal year 25055. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 210 affirms the following appointments by the mayor. Board of Health, Dr. Tomas Riley, term to expire December 31st, 2027, filling remainder of term of Ahmed Esfahani, who resigned January 2025. Constable David Pant, term to expire December 31st, 2025, filling remainder of term of F. Peter Clark, deceased May 2023. Historical Commission, Terrence Steiger, is term to expire December 31st, 2027. Majority vote required.
Can I have a second? Thank you.
This received a unanimous positive recommendation.
Great. And I just want to thank everybody who is willing to serve in these capacities. We really appreciate it for the town. Are any questions, or we want to call the vote? Okay, all in favor? Any abstains? Noes? Okay. Motion passes. Opposed? Thought I said that. Anyone opposed? All right. Next order is the formation of the Greenfield Unhoused Community. Counselor Brown, would you like to read that, please?
Sure, I have to pull up the right page.
Page 39.
Okay. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the formation of the Greenfield Unhoused Community Review Committee, an ad hoc committee of the Community Relations Committee for the purpose of examining and recommending changes, if needed, for better inclusion of unhoused community in Greenfield. The committee will be comprised of the following appointees to be announced once appointed. Three members appointed by the City Council President, two members appointed by the mayor. The appointees with approval of the City Council shall serve until a complete and final report and recommendation is submitted to the Community Relations Committee. Jury vote required.
Have a second? Thank you. I'll report for the committee. So this got a unanimous positive, and we did make an amendment to it.
Yes, the amendment was to strike through review, so just Greenfield Unhoused Community Committee, and also to delete three appointees by the City Council President and replace that with not more than five members to be appointed by the City Council President and two members from the mayor's office to be appointed.
Do I have a second on this amendment? Thank you. So I want to explain the rationale between the changes. So one was just wordsmithing, getting rid of the word "review", and then we had a really robust conversation about people to appoint. So one of the things that's really important to this committee is to have people with lived experience. We had several folks who attended the meeting who were very interested in serving. We'll have at least one city counselor on that, and I plan to appoint Counselor Brown, who is interested in being part of it. So when we started doing the numbers, we're like, we've got more people, and we want to make sure that we've got some other voices in the room, so we increased the number, so that we didn't have to come back to the council and do it again. So any questions or conversation? Counselor Gold?
Just one, I have one question. It occurs to me, I think, that about, was it about five years ago, there was a similar ad hoc committee? I remember hearing a report, and I'm wondering what the history, I don't expect you to, I just want to make sure that people are aware that a similar thing has happened, and just curious if you're aware of that and how you might build upon previous work.
I know I had asked the clerk about previous ad hoc committees and had two others that had been mentioned, but not that one. So for what that's, for what that's worth.
I could be wrong. I just, yeah.
And we can absolutely research it, for sure. You know, I think this committee came out of, this proposal came out of really good conversation that we had, that everybody wanted to continue. And there are a lot of issues. And I had a really good conversation with Amy as well about not duplicating effort. And after the end of that conversation, she said, "Clearly, you're not asking the same people. You're not duplicating what we're doing, but want to enhance that work." Anyone from the committee that wants to further comment? Counselor Perry?
Yeah, one, I was going to talk to Amy about this when she was here, but it's down the road, so I didn't worry about that. One of the participants on Monday night's meeting did talk about expanding the opportunity of using the warming center, not just on freezing cold nights, but on rainy nights and other opportunities. So that was brought up, so that might be a conversation within the committee down the road.
Yeah, and just to speak to one of the issues mentioned Monday night by someone who is unhoused and is hoping to be part of the committee is that their camping area was flooded with the past, like, snow melting, so.
Did I see Counselor Garrett's hand, and then I'll go to Counselor Gordon.
Point of order. Are we talking only about the amendment right now? Is that what we're supposed to be doing, or are we in the full conversation?
Thank you. That's really a good point. So let's vote on the amendment, and then we can vote, then we can discuss the full motion. So any other comments on the amendment? All right, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, the amendment passes. And then we'll go back to the initial motion, and we can have discussion comments on that. So I had Counselor Garrett.
So I am, I'm glad that you were able to talk to Amy about the duplicative nature potentially of some of these other committees, and I'm glad that that's not a concern. But I'd be curious to know how this ad hoc committee will interact with some of these other groups doing similar work. And that may be the agenda of your first meeting of the ad hoc committee, but I don't know if anything has already come up.
So just to answer, we, the committee will set how they're going to work, and there was initial conversation about making sure that they're being able to liaison with various organizations in the community. That's really important. Counselor Gordon?
Yeah, I was also really glad to hear that you had that conversation about not being duplicative, because that was definitely a concern of mine. And I'm just curious if you have any kind of estimate of an anticipated timeline or goal for, you know, when this committee would be able to conclude its work?
I would say by the fall, at the latest. I don't want this to drag long, for sure. And I know the folks in the, there's a lot of really good ideas that are percolating, and they're already thinking about their scope, because we don't want it to be everything, so really how directed we can be. So we've bounced around some ideas already. Counselor Gold?
So just to be clear, so the scope is to recommend new municipal responses around the unhoused community? Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Clerk Scott?
So Little Birdie reminded me that there was a committee after two of individuals passed away during the winter. I will look into what was, you know, the meetings, the minutes, and that sort of thing, and forward it out, if that's okay.
Great.
Sorry about that.
I'll, I'll just mention another issue that had, that the mayor brought to us, are some of the things happening at the library, so that will be part of the kind of conversation of how we make sure that it's both a welcoming place but safe, and how, how do you do both? So, very important. Well, I don't see any other questions, so we can bring it to a vote. So all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. All right, so the next one is approval for city, for the council president to provide a letter of support on behalf of the city council. Can I ask Counselor Bottomley to read that motion, please?
Sure. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves Council President Laura Wandelowski to provide a letter of support on behalf of the Greenfield City Council in regards to Mayor Disorga's request from the state legislator to receive funding from the environmental bond bill for the cleanup of the lunk property located at two ninety-eight Federal Street. Majority vote required.
Is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
Counselor Bottomley, if you want us to speak to the question?
Yeah, this is a, this has been in the works for a while, and it represents our best chance, this environmental bond bill, to, to maybe actually get this cleaned up. And I felt it would be better to do this than a resolution, since it would just be stating everything that was in the mayor's letter, plus we may have additional information from Lyons Witten, the city's LSP, so it just seemed like we could make a better, better advocacy by doing it this way.
Any questions for? My only question is, do you see this as a letter that's signed on by all of the counselors, or just under my signature? I'm not sure what we've done in the past.
I was hoping your signature would represent the will of the group, if, if people are okay with that.
He seems shaking his head, so. Any other questions? All those, Counselor Toronto?
I just want to say, I think this is actually a smart way to go about instances like this. I think it has a lot more teeth than something as simple as a resolution that would might have been passed in the past. And I think, I, I don't want to speak for everyone else, but if we were to pass this unanimously, though it only has your signature, that would also be echoing the backing of the full council. That, it's not, it's, there's no split. That's all.
That's a good point, and we can mention it in the letter, for sure. Great, thank you. All right, I think we're ready to vote, so all those in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, going down the list, approval for the mayor to enter in the pilot agreement. That went to EDC, is that correct? So I'll ask Counselor Healy.
Order number FY twenty-five dash zero five-three. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, in order to approve Mayor Disorga's to enter into a pilot agreement with BWC Melbrook LLC related to the solar farm development located at twelve forty-five Berniston Road, move that it be ordered that the City Council approves Mayor Disorga to enter into the pilot agreement with BWC Melbrook LLC related to the solar farm development located at twelve forty-four, twelve forty-five Berniston Road. And this was a unanimous positive decision by the EDC.
Do we have a second? All right, questions? I think we got them out of the way earlier, so let's move it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have to abstain.
Okay. And any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Uh, next, we go to the approval of the MOU, so I think that is Counselor Toronto.
Yep. Order number FY twenty-five zero five-four. City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, in order to approve the memorandum of agreement between the city of Greenfield and the Greenfield Permanent Firefighters Local two-five-four-eight IAFF AFL dash CIO, move that it be ordered that the City Council approve the memorandum of agreement between the city of Greenfield and the Greenfield Permanent Firefighters Local two-five-four-eight IAFF AFL dash CIO. Majority vote required. Uh, this did come with-
Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Okay.
This did come with a unanimous positive recommendation from committee.
Any questions? All right, let's call it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, next motion is the fee schedule for dog kennels. Anybody feel like reading it, otherwise I will. It's on page seventy-nine. I guess someone else needs to read it. Counselor Garrett, thank you.
Oh, and now I see what I just volunteered for. Whoops. All right.
You might even have to do the full rationale.
Okay, perfect. Order number FY twenty-five zero seven-two. That the City Council move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section twenty-two F, votes to approve the fee schedule below for dog kennels, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one thirty-six A to one seventy-four G, commonly referred to as Ollie's Law, as submitted by the city clerk. Dog kennels, personal, five to six dogs, seventy-five dollars. Personal, seven to nine dogs, a hundred dollars. Personal, ten or more, a hundred and fifty dollars. Breeder, two fifty. Training, two hundred and fifty. Boarding, two fifty. Vet boarding, two fifty. Daycare, two fifty. Commercial, two fifty. Shelter slash rescue, one hundred dollars. Multi kennel licenses will be two hundred and fifty dollars plus one hundred for each additional license. The kennel late fee, one hundred dollars. This fee schedule shall become effective upon approval of the City Council. Majority vote required.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm going to ask the clerk to explain why we're doing this, since I, I know this came more suddenly, so.
In late twenty-twenty-four, the Massachusetts Legislature passed a new dog kennel, kennel licensing law that's commonly referred to as Ollie's Law. The city clerk's office, as well as the police department and the ACO, have been working on the changes now required by Mass General Law. One of them is, as opposed to previously, we are not licensing the dog, we are licensing the kennel. We still have to obtain the dog information, the animal control officer still has to go do inspections, that sort of thing, but they have broadened the terms and the work for us in the ACO. We are looking at pricing and fees that we charge now. This was an opportunity for us to look at the kennel fees, which used to be per dogs, per dogs only, but now that they're looking at types of kennels, we saw this as an opportunity for those kennels that were, and I, I don't want you to think that I think just because they're a veterinary office, or if they're a breeder, that they're making slew of money, but this is an opportunity for kennels that do make money off of the animals to pay a little bit more for that ability to run their business. That's why the personal kennels are still around about the same, because people that just love dogs shouldn't be hampered by the fee, and shelter rescues shouldn't also have the burden of a business that is making money, because we all know shelter rescues do it because they love the animals, not to make the money. But the other border training, breeding, we saw that it wouldn't be out of line for us to have them pay a little bit more. So these are fees that we came up with in conversation in the office that we thought were appropriate, and saw them as a decent amount to pay, but not overly absurd. So this is the fee structure that we came up with, and hope that you agree, and if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Counselor Mr. Tortoro.
I assume there's a method in place to collect these fees.
There is. I'm sorry.
You may.
Okay. There is. So we, we are still working out all the details to make sure that everyone is informed. We have another meeting tomorrow with the police chief, and after that, we will be sending out letters to the people that the ACO has already gone to inspect, and we will let them know what the fee is for their type of kennel, and then they will make payment to the city corp's office. And it will go in the dog revolving account, which is used for care of animals, if we need to care for animals. It's used to order dog tags, it's used to, you know. Pardon? And at the end of the year, a majority of that money goes back to the general fund, while leaving, I think it's fifty-five or seventy-five hundred in the revolving fund for the next year, but you'll know all about that when the budget comes around, because that's the revolving fund.
Excuse me, is there a doghouse for those who don't pay?
Uh, there is a doghouse, because there's a late fee right here, it's a hundred bucks. And also, there's a late fee if you don't just license your regular dog not out, not in the, in the kennels.
That is true. Counselor Toronto, and then Counselor Gold.
I know this seems like a very weird, maybe segue to it. Has there been any talk about this kind of implementation for cats?
No, cap, licensing of cats is not required by Mass General Law.
It's not. Damn it.
We have an anti-cat.
Healy.
Uh, I'm going to go to Counselor Healy, who had their hand up first.
I was just curious if it should say personal four to six dogs, because our town charter says, or city charter says, any house with over three dogs needs a kennel license.
Don't, we are, time, no. We are also in the process of an ordinance review year.
Yep.
That animal ordinance, again, we're working with the police department and the ACO, will be amended to reflect Ollie's Law.
If you get my four dogs without a kennel license?
You can get your four dogs.
Yes! All right. Thank you.
Hello, kids, aren't you excited? Counselor Gold?
That answers my question, and I was just going to check that an ordinance was forthcoming for this, and yeah, you're working on it.
Yeah. The other ones are already sent to you or to the A and O committee, but the animal ordinance, we're still working through it.
No hurry.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
All right, any other questions? All right, so all those in favor, say aye. Any abstains? Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. All right, so going down the list, we don't have a presentation of petitions, a report of the committee's unfinished business or old business at the time. So moving to new business, as a, just point of information for the council, Counselor Brown is being appointed to the Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee for the remainder of the term of Vice President John Garrett, who resigned from the position. So thank you, Counselor Brown, for taking that on. And then the next is disclosure of executive session, session minutes, so I'm going to read that out. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-two G-one, the following executive session minutes have been released to the public or will remain within, withheld from the public as voted on by the council at their February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five executive session meeting. Executive session minutes that are released are February fifteenth, twenty-twelve Ways and Means Committee, October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five Appointments and Ordinance Committee, March twenty-first, twenty-eighteen, October sixteen, twenty-nineteen is partial release, May sixteen, twenty-twenty-two pending notification from the city attorney, August sixteen, twenty-twenty-three is partial, and August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Executive session minutes that are, remain withheld are February fourth, two thousand and eight, September twentieth, twenty-seventeen, May sixteen, twenty-eighteen, July twenty-sixth, twenty-eighteen, September nineteen, twenty-eighteen, June nineteen, twenty-nineteen, October sixteen, twenty-twenty-four. Released executive session minutes will be published on the city's website, and we are, we do our release and review annually in February, so we will come back to this again next February. All right, so on to first reading, and I think this is all going to be, Counselor Toronto's-
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I have to read those? Okay. I'm going to go back and say, presentation of petitions and similar papers, none. Report of committees, at the time of posting, there were no topics reasonably anticipated by the chair. Unfinished business, at the time of posting, there were no topics reasonably anticipated by the chair. Old business, at the time of posting, there were no topics reasonably anticipated by the chair. Counselor Toronto?
All right. Transfer three hundred and fifty-four thousand from pre-cash to tax title legal expenses to settle pending litigation related to tax title taking of real property. FY twenty-twenty-six capital budget, fifteen orders. Appropriate sixteen thousand capital stabilization for purchase of a fully electric vehicle for use by the Department of Public Works for meter reading. Appropriate three hundred thousand capital stabilization for purchase of three fully-equipped police patrol vehicles. Appropriate two hundred thousand capital stabilization for roadwork on and repairs. Appropriate two hundred and fifty thousand from capital stabilization for purchase of bucket lift truck. Appropriate one hundred and fifty thousand capital stabilization for purchase of one-ton truck. Appropriate ninety thousand from capital stabilization for purchase of a Department of Public Works three-quarter-ton highway truck. Appropriate thirty-four thousand capital stabilization for design engineering services for repair Maple Brook Culver at thirty-four Riddell Street. Appropriate thirty-five thousand capital stabilization for design engineering and permitting services for repair of Coleraine Street Bridge. Appropriate three hundred thousand from capital stabilization for repair and installation of fire alarm panel for the middle school. Appropriate thirty-five thousand for repair of Davis Street tents courts. Approve Department of Public Works Water Enterprise Fund to expend, retain earnings funds for thirty-five thousand to inspect Adams Hill Water Storage Tanks. Approve Department of Public Works Water Enterprise Fund to expend, retain earnings funds for eighty thousand dollars for purchase pickup truck. Approve Department of Public Works Water Enterprise to bond for five hundred thousand for engineering and design services related to dredging Green River water supply intake. Approve Department of Public Works Sewer Enterprise to bond for two hundred thousand for inflow infiltration repairs and replacement. Approve Department of Public Works to accept Chapter ninety funding for six hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars for roadwork and repairs.
Thank you.
Just the first reading.
Sure. All right, and then the notice of zoning amendment proposals, I think that is Counselor Healy's.
Notice of zoning amendment proposals, March nineteen, twenty-twenty-five. The following zoning amendment proposals have been submitted to the Greenfield City Council for consideration. Four zoning amendments to Section fifty-six accessory dwelling units, two amendments in subsection D accessory dwelling unit standards, paragraph number two, one amendment in subsection D accessory dwelling unit standards to add new paragraph eleven, one amendment in subsection C applicability, paragraph two, submitted by citizens petition on February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five.
Excellent. Motions for reconsiderations? Can I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? All right. Any opposed? Nine sixteen. Thank you, councilors. Thank you, councilors.